Good morning, everybody. Today is Wednesday, May the 29th, 2024, and it's nine o'clock AM. And you're all welcome to the Cook County Work Session by the Board of County Commissioners. So to get off, is there any public comment? Anybody online with public comment? Raise your hand, please. Well, seeing that, we will move right on into the discussion agenda. And then number one is the extension of the MOU with the Forest Service for the Free Wilderness Passes.
We have this for the past several years. If you have a library card and you go to the library website, crooklive.org, you can click on Discovery Passes and have free access to the Wilderness Pass and also the High Desert Museum. So this is an extension of our US Forest Service MOU that just extends free access for people with a library card for an additional year. So it's quite a deal. It's very similar to the Central Cascade Wilderness Permit, which is needed in some areas in the Cascades. And we would love to extend it.
Very good. We would love you to extend it.
I feel we should just put this on the consent agenda. Is there a time limit?
Before G15.
We're done.
The start date.
We're good. Next is reappointment of Steve and Beeler to Flat Rock Road District.
That's my husband.
Well, I kind of figured that.
There's two of us right now in the Flat Rock Road District, and we had generated about $6,000 from tax revenue for the first year. We just got a bid to go through the NEPA process, and it's about $90,000. So we are looking for grants to help us through that process. And we need that process before we can apply for Form 299, which is a BLM form. So that's where we're heading. Steve's on board. We'd like to reappoint him.
And is that timely? Or we can do consent agenda?
We can.
Okay.
And I will. Consent agenda then. And I will create an order for us for consent agenda.
So the next item, Cook County Measure 57 Funding Agreement Contract, and your own voice.
Yes. So this is Measure 57. This is an intergovernmental agreement that is just basically a renewed contract. We've, it's a funding stream that the community corrections get. We've had this for a long time. Originally, it was passed in 2008. I believe Measure 57 was passed, and this is supplemental funding. It's used to pay for a part of a position for a conservation officer, and then it's also used to fund our electronic monitoring and alternative sanction programming. This is just a contract that will need to be signed and by the commissioners.
Very good. Yeah, I looked at it. I'm really wanting to do this. This is great. The reading that I noticed that said July 1st of 2023. So is this just an addendum?
Yeah, this was an addendum. The contract, the state was very late getting our contracts out. It came out in March, and then I overlooked it. And so the state sent me a reminder email, and that's why it is. This is for the whole by any of the 23 to 25.
Is that around $107,816?
Yes, that is the correct amount that we're awarded.
Great. Perfect. I think this can also be on a consent agenda.
Fine with me.
No hurry on it, sign it?
No, they're aware, and I told them that it is on our meeting schedule today. And so, yeah, next week we'll be filing them all. So they executed copy to Department of Commerce.
Right here. Good thanks, Eric. Operating procurement for chip seal oil from Albina asphalt. So that's Brad?
Yes. That is a $549,000 procurement for the chip seal oil for Reservoir Road for this year. And that does include the distributors and everything.
Do they apply that to?
Yeah, they have the distributor. Yeah. So that's part of the rental of the distributors also.
And is this a timely or this can, can this still on consent agenda with the amount of money?
In this case, since I'm back from vacation, I have the exquisite pleasure of deferring my question to John.
So, yeah, this was, it's a cooperative procurement. So Deshues County went out and went through the bid process. They got the lowest responsive bidder. Part of that contract was they're opening up to other public agencies. And so under ORS 2798215, there's a process we need to go through, but we can basically piggyback on that contract with that little bit of process. Needs to be on the same terms that it was offered to Deshues County. We got a letter of confirmation that we will get the same terms. We had to put notice in the paper, which we did. It's been out for seven days. Basically, here's what we're planning on doing. Here's what the price is. Here's what we ordered. If you think you can bid it, please contact us. And I've had my email out there, and so far no one has reached out. But by next week, we should be go, should be good to go and have all the consent agenda.
Okay, so moved.
Will? John, you have another one. Domestic relations.
Brad's got one.
Crush contract.
Crush contract. Oh, I missed it. Brad, you have another one.
I do. I do. This is for the crush contract out at, what is the pit? I can't. It's off the top of my head right now, but it's our crush contract for.
For.
For contracting. And they just blew the pit up last week, and they are asking for an extension of the contract to June 31st, July 31st from June 15th. They just can't get in there as quick as they thought they could. They'll probably, they said they probably have it, but by the end of June, but we want to extend it to July 1st.
Is this rock you're using for Reservoir Road or?
No, this is, this is rock for the upper country.
Works for me. So the amendment just on a consent agenda for John.
It's okay.
Okay. Now, we will go to domestic relations. You need your contractor, John.
All right. I want to talk to you guys about this. It's just a simple extender contract that basically extends a contract to the end of the year. But it's kind of like going on behind the scenes that I wanted to bring to the court's, to the board's attention. Some of this might sound familiar, but by statute, the county is obligated to contract with a mediator for the circuit courts domestic relations cases. Remind you of kind of Justice Center stuff, but, so this contract is kind of in a black box. We originally sent out an RFP in 2013 where we hired Dave Allen. He, and every year since then, we just renew this year after year. The original contract had a cap on how much he was allowed to get per year, $18,250. But we are at the mercy of the circuit courts and the number of cases that they get that they then shuffle off to him. And so we've been blowing past that cap for a long time. OJD gives us money for this program, but for them, it had been a kind of a black box too. And so some years we would have a big surplus, other years we would have a deficit. And past few years, it had been deficit, deficit. And this year, we were going to have to tap in, I think, $4,000 out of our law library fund. A few months ago, OJD sent out a questionnaire to all the counties about how this program is working for them. We filled out the, Christina Herron and I filled out the questionnaire, and then we set up a meeting with OJD to talk about kind of how we can fix this program so we know, so we have a better idea what to expect. And so we don't, you know, run into deficits again. It was an encouraging conversation. They have a staff member on this now, and they assured us they're going to get things worked out. And moving forward, there won't be a deficit, and that $4,000 that we had a hole in will be covered. And so there should be, you know, communication moving forward where we kind of know what's going on on all sides. I also spoke with Dave Allen a few times. He knows what's going on. I talked about the history of the contract. I let him know that, what are we, 11 years now is way too long for us to go without putting it back out for our fee. Even though he's, you know, does a great job for us and for Jefferson County, but, so he's aware. He hasn't changed his prices since 2013, which is good. He charges per mediation. Most of the mediators in the state charge by the hour. He claims we're getting a better deal because he's more efficient and isn't trying to nickel and dime us and doesn't track all his hours anyway. OJD, basically, he's not tracking. He also gives hours to OJD. They said he wasn't tracking all his hours for them. So according to them, he's like the highest paid mediator in the state, but that's just because it's not giving them other hours. But anyway, moving forward, I, these usually expire at the end of fiscal year like this one does, but this one is going to expire at the end of the calendar year. So we can do an RFP in the fall when we can know how much funding OJD is going to have for us for the next year. And so I just wanted to make sure you guys were all aware. We'll send out the RFP probably in September or October for start of work, January 1st. And there's a good chance it'll be him again, just because it's, you know, pretty much the best that is around here. So that's what it is. But this thing is a simple contract that puts it down the road until the end of the year.
Because that's what RFP is, it has to be based on an arming or however they want to do it?
I was going to structure the RFP so they propose how they want it to be paid, propose their fee structure. And that can be something we take into consideration. Dave did send me a long email last week, you know, kind of saying how much he wanted to have this contract again. And I wanted you guys, the board, to kind of make note of what you guys thought was most important for this role so we could put that in the RFP in the fall. So I might be contacting you again in a few months.
Well, thank you for looking into that, getting this money back.
Thank you. I never liked this contract because we just kept signing year after year. We didn't know how much it was going to cost us. And like I said, this cap was in there. It was not honored. And so we got it all fixed.
And it's a strange arrangement where the county pays for it if the services are really rendered to the circuit court. Another one of those, yes.
Yeah. But all this is doing is just extending it until we get to September when we re.
On this end, on the backend with OJD, we're working out getting.
Yeah. But we're still at the $500 per case and all of that. So again, I guess it can just be a consent agenda.
Correct.
Okay. So moved or whatever.
You don't need a motion.
You're doing good.
I'm just moving. Okay.
Commissioner, you're next. Discussion regarding salary of inter-county.
So we have a new intern county manager, for better or worse. I don't know if Will's happy or not, but your stuff, Will.
Where's for who?
So basically, it needed to be a public item. I went over to Kathy Puckett and Jamie Berger, and they kind of put this together to make things look good. It has a policy from our handbook, has the out-of-class pay calculator, has the personnel action form. So as far as I'm concerned, it's kind of a slam dunk. I'm not sure if we can put this on consent agenda because I don't know if it needs to be, again, public for county court. That's a legal thing.
Yeah, so you can put it on the consent agenda if you wanted to, or some member of the public said, I want to discuss.
Pull it. Can we could pull it? Okay. Then I just figure if, Will, do you have any comment or, okay, we talked about it yesterday.
It sounds like it's consistent with county policy and.
Then I would say then we put it on the consent agenda.
So be it.
Okay.
You have another one.
I'm just busy.
Events and activities.
So I have an attachment, and we're not supposed to look at the crossouts. Somehow Steve Forrester got the clean one. And anyway, these are the various functions that the county has given for free. So if you look at it, there's St. Charles Hospice, there's Kiwanis, there's Pee-wee rodeo, high school rodeo, Tri-County rodeo, to the tune of the new updated is $23,428. There is also a list of other functions that come, but I think that that would be something that, you know, they could come and ask for. Stock growers is on your freebie too, so you can't complain. So my thing would be to, I won't let it complain. I, so my thing would be is if we could, we just put this on the consent agenda and do the $23,000, $23,428, approve those functions. And then if the other ones like Humane Society or someone like that wants to come forward and do a presentation, we do have our community fund that we can figure that out. Is there any comment?
No, I don't have any. I think that if you keep track, it's one of these will resolve. That's the way to stop that.
What I'm hoping for is I have went and met with the city of Primeville, and my thing to Steve was, how's your Subway sandwich place do when the high school rodeo is in town? And he will tell you that it quadruples. So I am definitely thinking that we need some funding from, from the city of Primeville. And he was going to go to city council, and I need to probably go over and tell him the armored truck is outside one more time. But that is my, you know, I think that we do this right now. This is what we've done in the past. But I do believe we need to form a partnership with the city of Primeville and hopefully be able to do some of our capital improvements and things to make this an even bigger and better venue for people to rent.
So, so long as I understand what, which we have two sets, we have $23,428, and you're saying that we just do this because all these people have always come in and asked for it? So are we, are we?
Keep wanting to come in and.
That's what I'm asking.
Casey kind of just wanted assurances whether we were going to be on the same path as we had been before. So we can go back and say we'd like them to request it. It's totally, I just wanted to bring it forward. Casey was unsure because he has the high school rodeo going on. They were told, the high school rodeo did come and ask, and they were told by the fair board that we weren't going to do it this year. So if you would like me to transmit that we want these people to come in, we can do that too. It's just kind of a matter of bringing it out in discussion. And what is our philosophy? And is that what we're going to do?
Well, I think if we're going to have the other group come in, then I think they probably.
Which we can.
Which should have been.
Brian.
A letter of request or.
Yes. Can I clarify here? So the previous county manager did not want these folks coming into the county court meeting for whatever reason. So he started sending them to the fairgrounds, to the fair board meetings. And so all of these folks did come to the fair board, except there wasn't any funding ever put forward. There was a little bit. I apologize for that, but there wasn't enough to cover it. And so now I understand that it's going to go, return back to the folks are going to go in front of the county court and do the requests.
Okay, that, that's, that works fine for me. I don't care how it's done. I just want to make sure that we do it the same for everyone. So this is more or less just a place holder that gives you comfort and know that you're going to be reimbursed for these activities. And so it could be $40,000 or maybe $50,000, whatever it goes. But this is just kind of a list of people, and I agree with everyone that's on the list. So it's all good, but.
Yeah, we tried to put a list together of everybody that could possibly want to come in. So along with the normal, every year, people that come in and ask for support.
Right. No, and I think it's great. You know, everybody wants something from the fairgrounds, and fairgrounds budget doesn't permit that. And so it needs to be compensated from the county in order to do it. And it is a great draw to Primeville and 100% support.
Okay.
So Casey, on this, because high school rodeo is going on right now, obviously, they didn't come and ask, how do you want to handle this? I guess this is my question to you.
Well, they, they did come and ask the, the fair board. They were sent, they, they were sent from the county court to the, to the fair board. So the fair board did, you know, entertain the request. However, there was only, there wasn't any other funding put forward. So we didn't really know what to tell them. We said we would take in other advisement and then try to work through the commissioners to get it put, put to bed. So this is kind of the end result. We're trying to get it put to bed.
Would you prefer to have them come before the fair board?
It was my understanding that you, the three commissioners really enjoyed having the kids come in and make a presentation. It.
We do.
It seems to be, it just seems to add another step if, if we send them to the fair board, then to the county court.
Right. I, just one, whether it's the county court or the fair board probably.
I kind of like them coming to county court. It makes it more public. It lets the community know what we're doing. And I feel, where's the fair board? I know it's televised, but let's face it, Casey, how many people watch it? So I would like to see them come to county court. I guess what my question is, is how many of these is, is, it's passed? So we need to, you know, we want you to know that, yes, you're getting the money. That was the reason for putting this on here. But like I say, where do we go from here? Like Tri-County High School Rodeo already went by.
Yeah, the, the meet went by. The state finances here in the future. We have, we have another Pee-wee rodeo this weekend. We have several coming up. So, I mean, we're almost done with the list that you have in front of you.
Yeah, really, basically, you have hospice and casino night is pretty much the only ones here. That's why I wasn't sure if it was better that we pass this so that he knows he has this because these are already events that have went by with the caveat that next year they come before us. I'm not exactly sure where you want to go with that, Brian. I mean, I agree, I want him to come and present. I agree, that's the way it should be, but there was different direction. So now we need to establish the direction we want, which I think the kids should come in. But we've already let him be there. So do we just go ahead and pass with the exception of Kiwanis and St. Charles? I'm not sure where we, where we go, I guess.
Well, I think that anything that has transpired to Christina should do some transferable plans if she hasn't already done that.
Okay. Is that good with you, Casey, then?
That's perfect.
And then, and then the other groups can come in and ask, and then we go from there?
Yeah, I guess I can work with, with Will and, you know, the process or Sarah, however you want it to happen. And just in the future, we'll just have everybody come to the county court and make their presentation.
Just like it used to be. I think that's, I mean, that's the way I'd like to see it, but that's me.
No, I would too. I think it's great information that the people can hear, and it's different promotion.
And then it also enables anyone on the rest of this list to be able to come, and we can make a decision at that time too. So, okay, I'm wondering if for county court next week, if we went through and made a list of the stuff that's already been, and we pass for that amount of money? And I guess basically we subtract the almost, what, $3,500 from Kiwanis and St. Charles for them to come? Would that be better to do it that way? Would that be cleaner?
Does that direct it at me?
Yeah, that was you. I'm looking at the owl. You can't see me?
However you'd like to, to, to slice it up, we'll, we'll do it any way you want. I, I'm not sure. I can't speak for the finance department, but Christina, are you, what's going to be easiest for your group?
I think that works for us. We're pretty flexible. So.
Okay. So is that on this chart is St. Charles and Kiwanis? I mean, I'm not looking at the ones via past. They are the only ones on the chart that we typically give that have not, not been, have their function, right?
Correct.
Everybody else is, okay, then I'll just, we'll just revise this and then make a motion, put it, can we put it on the consent agenda? Or do we need to revise it now because it would be different?
So if there's a new document which is submitted for the agenda, I think you don't need to have further discussion. I think you can put it on the consent agenda.
Okay, okay. Then I'll see to getting this redone. Is that okay with you? Okay. All right. Thank you, Casey. Especially thank you for your clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina is going to present this item for us.
Okay, National Public Service Rate Increases Request to County.
Good morning, commissioners. I'll be taking over this one for Jackie. Unfortunately, she's out sick today. So we were able to review all the information that was provided by Republic and go back to them with some questions, and they provided us answers to those. And then we also met with the city to discuss our recommendation. After reviewing all that information is that we would recommend an 8% fee increase rather than the 10%. The city's plan is also to recommend a 2% to 3% lower increase than what was requested. So happy to answer any questions on that.
No, I don't think I have any. That's, that's worse. It's cut my, you know, and their service has picked up a little bit. But I think we made a pretty thing to them that needed to. They wanted to keep coming in and doing this. So I haven't heard as many complaints. So apparently it has picked up.
I will say this, in Palina, they have been very happy, and they've actually added a recycling thing in Palina, which has made people very happy. So I have, I asked the other day, and everyone seemed to be very, so they did pick it up out there.
That's great. Okay. The one outstanding item is the process that we had asked them to put together to credit back customers. They are still working on that and will be presenting that to you sometime later, as well as the city, to, to get your approval on their plans for that.
Great. You have any questions?
Yeah.
I don't either. A little bit forward on the consent agenda. Do you know if they're going to come with their policy on how they're going to reimburse before we make this transaction or not?
That would be a great question for Jackie. I'm not sure. We could ask them to present that at our next meeting if you would like.
Never hurts.
Then maybe it should remain discussion. Yeah. We'll just keep it discussion, and then they can present. It'll be better. Let's just do that, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly? Good morning. Morning. So this is a request for signatures for a grant application for FAA. It's a project that we have ongoing. We already have the design and engineering process. So this is the application for the construction portion. So it's a $4 million grant. We need to give them an application first. If I get signatures, say, next week, if it's on the consent agenda, I'll probably submit it to them right after that. Award for the grant, we're probably looking end of July, first of all, I guess, something like that. But today I'm just looking for, I guess, the request for signatures on that occasion, which is, I don't know, 25 pages. I think I connected to Sarah. So, yeah. And that would be great for the consent agenda.
It will be fine. Sure. Okay. Looks good to me. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Bill and Brody.
Oh, dear.
My boy.
There we go. This is a big one.
So, Brody, yeah, Brody ruined my day last week, and I've been stressed about it since. So I'll let Brody start with why he decided to ruin my day.
Well, I received an email regarding the renewal of our contract for Actuar Control, which handles all of the video management and controls in the jail. And they let us know that basically our video software and video cameras would be obsolete in 2026. So right now, we're looking at doing either a migration and what that would look like, pros and cons, and then also the whole cost for replacing those systems. We're getting some ballpark figures right now of 100 to 500. Okay?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Could we stay at the 100?
Yeah, right. At first, he said 100 to 200. I tried to push him to get this estimate together for this meeting, and he kind of came back and said, no, I can't do that. It's going to take a couple of weeks to put together. If you need a ballpark, 100 to 500.
And Brody, just for clarification, that's from the migration option, right?
No, that would be the replacement.
That would be the replacement.
Yeah.
So Actuar Control is dropping out.
It's really taking them over. It's really taking them over. It's third-party Pelco camera system, that Accurate Controls is still gonna be around. What happened was Pelco was bought out by Motorola a few years ago, and Motorola and Pelco were kind of the same company, Plan Nice, and then Motorola kind of dissolved Pelco and will no longer support Pelco as a independent company. So it has become Motorola, which is their own system, um, and we're gonna look into what that would cost and migrate over to that. Their software engineers are still looking into maybe possible issues with the migration of the Pelco camera system. Right now, they're kind of taking the easy route and saying, well, we recommend just replacement of the system, um, because they don't have all the answers yet for the migration. What the pros and cons would look like, and how that software would interact.
And then there was something about the licensing agreements, that some of the licensing agreements were gonna fall off on June twenty-eighth.
Correct, yeah.
This year, and then some more are gonna fall off in December of twenty-four. And I don't know what that looks like for having coverage, um, after these things fall, I mean, if they fall off, then I would assume that we just don't have the the coverage from the company that we just signed the contract with, so.
Right, right, Bill brought up a good point, so, on June, I believe it's June twenty-eighth, um, they will no longer be accepting the additional licensing of hardware and software, basically, so we wouldn't be able to add anything after June twenty-eighth. The real issue comes in December thirty-first, because that is the end of the channel licensing, so we would not be able to replace hardware. If we were to ever have an issue with our server over there, or even the hardware involved in that video management software, we wouldn't be able to replace it.
But we're covered till December?
Correct, yes.
So we have some time, we just need to do some more research.
Exactly.
And figure out what the best option is.
And so, yeah, when Brody brought this up to me, I wanted to get in front of you guys right away, so that we did have some time to think about it and and figure out what we're gonna do. Um, make the best decision that we could, um, given the circumstances. Um, you know, and then, but something else that I want to put on your mind, I brought Drew with me today to talk about some case law that, uh, that's relatively new. Um, and what the the Ninth Circuit is deciding for for the video stuff in the jails. Uh, and, and then, um, also, like he was talking about the hardware in in our OC four booking cell right now. Um, I have the camera pulled up on my screen and it is, it, the quality just is not there. Um, you can't see what's going on here or there, um, in that cell currently.
So, the important, the important factor for our cameras is the ability for us to record, download recorded material that can be used as evidence, so. Um, and it's evidence both with, we use that as evidence of crimes that are committed inside the jail when people are, um, damaging property, they're assaulting each other, that kind of stuff. It's also to document, um, if there's something that could be brought to litigation later. We're gonna use a force that's very contentious if we're in, um, a medical emergency, something where a lawsuit can come down the road later. We download all that footage so we can show the measures we're taking to do those life-saving measures or to, uh, handle force at the lowest possible level, I guess, to kind of protect, uh, the the staff. The the migration thing, the thing we have to make sure we pay attention to, is that we still retain that ability to download that footage, because of the case law that those referencing this kind of came on our. Uh, we had the OSSA conference last weekend, jail command council had had legal update from Elmer Dickens, and, um, essentially what came down, I I wanna say Yanville County, but I could be wrong on that, so quote me on that, but, um, the jail was unable to retain something that was being used as evidence, and what essentially happened was the 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 jury instructions that came out is anything that the jail should have known could be evidence that they don't, um, retain. The jury will be instructed that that's spoliation of evidence, which essentially means that, um, assume it's bad for the county. So if we have a use of force that we are unable to download, we have a medical incident that we're unable to download, or suicide attempts or something like that, that could result in a major incusy injury or an incusy death, and we don't have that ability to retain it, and it goes before a jury, they're gonna essentially be instructed, assume that whatever the jail didn't give you is bad for the county. So, um, that's kind of why it's on our, the front of our heads right now, make sure we make the the best decision for everybody, because it's a the the camera system, it's it's, you know, it's good for the immediate monitoring and seeing what's coming and going right now, but also that ability to download stuff that, um, it's major incidents, it's said that jail is a very valuable tool for us, and we make evidence and that could help us out. So, that's kind of why it's a, something we want to raise attention right now, even though we still have time.
So on June twenty-eighth, what happens on June twenty-eighth?
June twenty-eighth, we won't be able to add anymore, uh, cameras or any other software.
Okay, but we still will be able to download at that time.
Yes.
We actually will be able to download until December. So we do have time to research this, find the best system, and make a decision, okay, okay.
And then just for reference, the the camera that those referring to, what happened was, um, that was, and I don't know, is that gonna fall under what would be expired on June twenty-eighth, is that considered adding, what? No. Okay, so that's good, but essentially what happened was that camera essentially took a, you know, it just died. And so that cell was only intermittently recording, and that cell is referred to as OC four, you guys have all been, that's our gray cell where we hold our suicide watches, our use of force incidents, they get, uh, they're housed in there, so it's a very high liability, high frequency cell incidence, so it was a big deal, so the fact that they replaced it and we're still fighting with them on getting good quality picture resolution is, it's significant in that cell, because it was used for our most high-volatile expenses, so. Everybody's gotta get a full picture.
Yeah, they've been on this the wrong ways during the last five years, so.
It doesn't leave you expecting Brody ruined my day. And I blame him.
Not what I wanted to see.
It's Brody's fault.
I don't, I think he should be blamed for it, I don't think he wanted to do this to us, that, Brody, I'll stand up for you.
Well, I appreciate it.
He bullies you anymore, just call me, or slap him alone.
I can see.
Well, let's just keep researching, what's out there, what's available, and as soon as I get information off, we'll let everybody know.
Okay.
Maybe you guys check around whether the jails, and see what type of systems they're using, what. Yeah, okay. Hey, moving right along, Sheriff's Office update.
I'm bringing this for everybody, I guess, sorry. Okay, so, uh, again, to kind of keep in order here with, uh, uh, comp stats, um, that I presented last month, I did have a few, uh, categories to make it look a little bit better. Um, but for, um, assault for the month of April, and this is compared to April twenty-four to April twenty-three, that's where we get our comparable stats. Uh, assaults are down twenty-five percent, domestic violence was up eighty-six percent, um, harassments were down seventy-five percent. Um, and strangulation, there was no change, because we didn't have any, uh, the month of of April. Uh, menacing were up a lot, we have, uh, we have ten cases of menacing in twenty-four compared to one in twenty-three, which the percentage there is huge, but, um, and burglaries were up fifty percent, drugs, uh, were up four hundred percent, drug cases. Uh, DUIs were up a hundred and forty-three percent, now seventeen DUIs in the month of April compared to seven in twenty-three.
Yeah, one of that. Uh, do you know off the top of your head if there's a particular drug for the DUIs, if that is only alcohol, or is that marijuana, is that meth, is that?
For DUIs, it's any of that.
Yeah, okay, and do you know off the top of your head if there's, you know, a dramatic increase in a particular type of drug?
Uh, no, I don't know, the, um, on the drug laws, that's just kind of all of them, it's it's gonna be your marijuana, meth, heroin, fentanyl, it's gonna be all of them.
Okay.
Um, combined, but I will also say that those numbers are probably really low, because we don't have a code detective currently. Um, and so, like, if in the, in the month of March, we had zero, um, drug law cases, just because, and I I do drugs are here, and, uh, they are, there's criminal amounts of drugs here, uh, but we don't have people that are that are working specifically on those cases currently. Um, injury traffic crashes were up fifty percent, non-injury traffic crashes up twenty percent. Uh, mental health cases, POH, which is police officer hold, where we, uh, take somebody into custody and deliver them to the hospital, um, without a crime, was up three hundred percent. Uh, sex crimes were up, uh, twenty percent, thefts were up fifty percent, trespassers were down eighty percent. Um, unattended deaths were down fifty-seven percent, uh, stolen vehicles were up forty percent, and warrant arrests were up a hundred and twenty-nine percent.
What is U U M V?
Stolen vehicles, unauthorized use of motor vehicle, that's the, that's the ORS statutory language, it's called unauthorized use of motor vehicle. Um, so basically, it's just a stolen vehicle.
Okay.
Um, the total arrests, this is just sheriff's office stats, uh, this is what I I gave to you last month as well. Um, so sheriff's office had sixteen felony arrests last month, uh, thirty misdemeanor arrests, and six other arrests. Um, with an increase of seventy-three percent, um, over twenty-three to twenty-four. Uh, I added this new section down here, which is the total jail stats, so this includes all of the three agencies that book in. Um, so we booked in a hundred and three people last month, uh, with an eleven point nine percent increase. Um, nine, or move on, seventy-nine of them, uh, were males, twenty-four females, uh, nineteen, uh, total DUI arrests, so the sheriff's office arrests and seventeen DUIs, total DUIs that came into jail was nineteen. So the city only arrested, or OSB only arrested two, two DUIs last month. Um, they they booked nine assaults, uh, and four failed to report as a sex offender. Uh, the interest, another interesting one for me is the calls for service, this is one that's important, because this is what takes our time. Uh, total calls for service for the month of April is twelve hundred and sixty-eight calls for service, uh, five hundred and seventy-one of them are self-initiated calls, so traffic stops, those kinds of things. Um, but there's a twenty-four percent increase in calls for service from twenty-three to twenty-four. And then over in the far right column, I have March of twenty-four, so it's it's going, the comp stats I'm doing are from twenty-three to twenty-four. Those are the important ones, because you're comparing apples to apples. But then I also compared March of twenty-four to April of twenty-four, and our, uh, calls, cases were down twenty-three percent. Um, from March, our sheriff's office arrests were down twenty-eight percent, and the total jail, uh, stats were down seven percent, uh, from the month of March. Um, calls for service were down too, which, it's starting to get a little warmer, but we also had a lot of rain, so that might have been, um, part of the reason for that. Um, and then on the next page, I put some graphs in here, just to kind of give a visual representation, these are the comp stats, so, um, like the DUIs, for example, on this first one. Um, April of twenty-four was seventeen versus April twenty-three was seven, so there's a dramatic increase in blue, um, from comparables twenty-three to twenty-four. Um, the one to the right is out, the jail, uh, total bookings a hundred and three versus ninety-two, which is a pretty big jump. Um, and then the inmates, it's the male versus female population, seventy-seven percent male, uh, to twenty-three percent female. Uh, and then the calls for service were up, it just shows just a bar graph of the percentages that we were up. The layout of this, the what, kind of what I added, is that, is that helpful, you think, is that?
Yeah, no, I, I need to get it in good format.
No, I think you did good, yeah. I want you to give big hands, that you did, yeah.
Okay, well, I'll come back next month with, uh, maize, which might be up a little bit.
I'm imagining June until I over live you.
Oh, yeah.
That's when, that's when, usually mid-June, well, right about a week before the rodeo is when we see our big spike in calls for service and cases and all of those things, and they usually last until, um, just after Labor Day, is usually when it kind of starts to taper off a little bit. Um, years, twenty years ago, it was, it was interesting, because we would get like a week of just jam-packed, go-go-go all the time, jumping call-to-call. Then we get two weeks of nothing, where we'd be out, you know, hunting traffic stops or, you know, looking for whatever we could find. Um, in today's market, that's not, I mean, you look at the calls for service twenty years ago versus calls for service now, I mean, that's a big difference. Um, and so our our downtime now, in today's market, isn't really downtime, I mean, the guys are still hustling pretty good.
Thank you. Well, community development, well, Randy?
I think, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to have a conversation with Sarah about the order of our our reports, because the arrests versus building permit numbers. I don't think it's quite comparable in terms of entry or interest, so.
Sorry, Will.
We may actually get Bill a credit account out, man, it's where to get a bigger app. Do I call you boss, or my boss's boss today?
Community Development Director right now.
Okay.
So, uh, numbers, building permits, last month, we did, there was only fifteen houses, uh, forty-six commercial, like I've said, the last three, four years, commercial, even besides the data centers, are still considered to grow. Um, residential, other permits, you know, your shops, your, you know, heat pumps, not so many wood stoves right now, a hundred and nine. Um, so total was about a hundred and ninety-five, if you look at the fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we're only down about two hundred permits, so, I mean, building-wise, you know, again, the volume is is city and county, because we do both jurisdictions. So, I mean, it's not a ton, but, um, we are down a little bit, but it is, again, giving us time to train the guys in Blue Beam, so that's the big thing that we've got coming at us next, is January one, we're required to accept digital plans if the applicant so chooses, so it's a, an effort that the state has granted us X amount of licenses in Blue Beam. Um, through some of the fees that we pay the state to administer the program on their behalf, which, you know, it's been, you know, five, six thou- five, six thousand dollars savings of the apartment. But it's getting all the guys trained to do those digital plan reviews, signature stamps, that type of thing. Um, so, you know, currently, two hundred, two hundred plus houses still under construction last month, seven hundred and sixty-seven other, like, shops, coal barns, and then three hundred commercial permits, so, you know, last month, we're still managing twelve to thirteen hundred types of construction projects, so I mean, they can be as, you know, as large as an H occupancy we're working on, or somebody's front deck on their home, so. Um, still averaging about a thousand inspections a month, so that's each time the guys gotta go out to different job sites to perform one inspection on those permits. So usually we average a thousand, fifteen hundred, you know, peak season when data centers are going upwards of fifteen, eighteen hundred, but by then we'll have staff and permitting offices up at those locations to handle those remotely. Um, large projects under construction, you guys can see those, uh, we're still working on the complete final final CCO five-six, we're getting pretty close there. Justice Center's still going, um, we're in negotiations, Terry met with Apple and their reps last week at the office. Um, they're gonna finish out that building they've got going, they did it in two phases. Uh, we're preparing to final out half the first phase, and then kick online with Fortis being brought on. We're also facilitating with them to bring in new job site trailers for Fortis and Apple, and some of their subs up at the campus at Apple. Um, for the beginning ramp of that construction project, we met with them, um, on the new plants, and those for Apple, to finish out phase two. Um, still working up at Central Oregon Campus, which is the old mill of, uh, you know, of Mackay, Maine. Still working up there with those folks, trying to get their H occupancies done, uh, with Central Oregon Processing, they went through some partnership changes and kind of put some of their projects on hold, but they began work again up there. Um, they're gonna be doing some heptane extraction in the new building, um, so essentially that's our hemp processing, where the first facility, they take it and wash it in ethanol, then the next building they, uh, designated is they take that crude oil and basically refine it. Um, and then the next process is where they actually take it and refine it even more into like the edible stuff. We got Oregon Department of Ag involved, that, uh, they, you know, they're at each location to make sure it meets food safety law, and that's where they'll create the, like, distillage and stuff like that, and go and, you know, your beers, and, you know, you know, all the other things, you put CBD oil in.
This same principle is they're doing it all.
This same principle is they're doing it off off the gardener. Yes. So, yeah, we've got High Desert, so that's our other H occupancy. Um, they're on the left, we have phase two, we've got, I can't remember the name of that company. And then we've actually got another one up on the hill, small shop that's up there off Sesna. So um we've got the most legally permitted hemp extractions, I think, in the state here. And some of the most permitted H occupancies, which other than a high-rise, they're the most dangerous. Other thing too is there a new place called Pramble Play Place is coming in, just so you guys know, it's over there by uh, you know, the old mattress store kind of there by across from McDonald's. There was a mattress store and then there's a art, a car sales place for a little bit. They're converting that into a play place. Somebody's uh community member stepped up and that's a place you can take your kids and watch them on rainy days and have some activities in there for the kids to hang out. Um, adult supervision only, so it's not like a daycare preschool type uh deal where there's more structure requirements.
Stand in the back.
It is. Yeah, you know where that art gallery is, right there on the corner, it's, it's in that back porch, yeah. I'm still waiting here on the apartments. We had comment back to them in regards to the type of construction and some of their uh information on their plans that we didn't think was quite accurate. We've been waiting about a month to hear back on that. Um, full bag is, everybody, you know, a few of you know that the tractor supply place, they finally provided us a set of plans.
Finally.
Yep, and substantial upgrades to that building. And then we've gone through and there's still some comment back and forth we're working with them on now.
What happened with the firewall?
So they're still discussing the firewall for separation. They didn't include part of their building area. Um, they also have a control room in there that Helena Ag's at. We don't know if that's, so there's some other things, you know, control room is like an H occupancy, but in a limited quantity. You're allowed to have so many control rooms protected by fire barriers, so we're still in negotiations, conversations back and forth on the plans, which typically happens is um you know, they provide a set of drawings and building department reviews to see if they're accurate for safety. So we're discussing with them and then uh a daycare maybe coming into the old honey hole. So we've got a set of plans in there, the old, the old honey hole, it used to be the old Grimes Chicken House off Maters Highway.
Yeah.
So um we gotta go over some plans with that today. So that's usually how it happens is, you know, for the money the client wants to pay versus, you know, depending on first-year attorney versus a thirty-year attorney out experience there in the code, knowledge or law. So just depends on which discussion it could.
This is off the subject, but I'm on a childcare kind of committee that's the city of Pramble County, anyway. And fifty million dollars is being released by the state and they expect ten million dollars to come into Central Oregon. And what they're looking for is not staffing, they're looking for places to have childcare. So just to keep in the back of your head, there's money there. I contacted the the city and said, hey, you know, if a project comes up or there's any ability that we can work that, just, I said something that Will, but I'll say something to you too, just to keep it in the back of your head.
And so you know the, there's a big push during COVID for childcare and that's when the um, you know, they, they came to us, building officials statewide and tried to put some rules in there that the building official have the authority to say what's equivalent to fire suppression. A lot of it came down to uh preschool daycares within a dwelling unit. And in order to convert a dwelling unit, if you had five or less kids, it's pretty easy, but most folks wanted five or more. And they wanted the, the building officials to make the fire life safety call and um with OBOA and the building officials, we kind of said, hey, you know, we're not comfortable with being, you know, part of protection of life when the systems are in place for a reason. And so the state actually, somebody lobbying through legislature and they want to change the code, so now it's not three to five kids that don't have to have fire suppression, it's upwards of fifteen that don't need fire suppression. Fire marshals aren't very happy about it, but it got changed. It's benefit for the daycare folks.
Yeah, just like I say, just a side note.
That's your loss.
Sorry. Thank you, Randy.
You're welcome.
I'll uh be quick on the planning and onsite side of things. Uh I just remain a broken record when it comes to the planning activity. Uh thirty-two permits in April. It um it's down from thirty-eight this time last year. I think the, the story um is told better by looking at the year-to-date numbers for planning and then the fiscal year-to-date numbers. We're down year-to-date um over fifty permits and then fiscal year-to-date, we're getting close to the end of the fiscal year. We're down close to a hundred permit or, oh yeah, Andy's permit, so uh things have remained slow on the planning side. At least with the current planning. As far as notable current planning applications, uh there was a hearing uh a couple of weeks ago on a request for a retail store of Trinidad Canyon. We've had over a hundred comments on that so far uh from, from the public. Uh there's a rescheduled hearing the next couple of weeks for deliberations on, on that one. We have a pending uh aggregate pit uh application to amend the conference of plan to expand the site on the inventory. It's an existing pit, but they want to expand the description of it, uh the site for the inventory. So that, that will be heard by the Planning Commission later this uh summer and they'll make a recommendation to the county board on that. Uh, we have a few other larger applications we're anticipating, coming to, we're anticipating the receipt up here before too long, but uh to date, haven't seen them. So stuff remains slow on the current planning side. On the long-range planning side, though, we remain very busy, so we've got the TSP update project that is in uh kind of full go right now. We are um, we're getting, working through some comments with ODOT uh regarding the existing conditions memorandum that will be a part of the TSP. From there, the consultant will start to put together some kind of proposed draft solutions and they will come and do some public presentations about the Planning Commission and the county board. Uh hopefully later, later this summer or early fall, so that'll, uh that'll be kind of our next public outreach event. Uh hopefully with some proposed solutions for us to, to learn a little bit more about, um to get some feedback from the public on. Uh, we also are working on, as a part of the TSP update, we are working on a safety action plan, so we executed the uh grant agreement with the US Department of Transportation within the last month or so. I'm currently meeting uh with their local kind of project manager on that to figure out how, how we can move that project forward as quickly as possible. Uh we may have to go out for an RFP on that to comply with federal regulations, so that may slow down the overall TSP project, but um it's a big grant and the safety action plan's an important thing for the county to adopt to set us up for receipt of um grant funds in the future for actual construction projects, that type of fund, those types of funding opportunities. So it's an important component of the TSP update that we, we need to get done. Um, and then uh as we discussed at a recent meeting, we are, we're moving forward with the Department of Defense grant and military training. Uh we have retained Anne Byer um to kind of take the lead on that for us as a consultant. And she's, she's hit the ground running and has started, um we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago and she seems excited about moving forward with that, so happy to have her on the team for that project. So, and we've got some other um other long-range planning projects, including an update to Title Seventeen and um we need to take a hard look at some of our play, flight plane regulations as well. So we've got a lot of stuff planning to fire as far as long-range planning, but current planning, again, just broken record, stuff remains slow. Uh, the good news, though, is onsite is a little bit better um than it was this time last year. It looks like we did twenty-three permits in April of this year versus twenty-one last year. Those numbers are always, always kind of low, but um just seeing those numbers of a couple of permits is, is a good sign, in my opinion, so uh nothing much to report there, but at least we're not seeing those numbers down dramatically. Because as we've just discussed several times, many times, onsite is kind of the first indicator of, of a trend, so either up or down. So things are holding steady there. And then Louis, do you have anything you want to add for code compliance? Looks like you've got um close seven cases in April or eleven cases in April and open seven, so that's the, that's the direction we like to see. You like to close more cases than we open, so. That's good, yeah. Anything else exciting happening, code compliance in April?
Um, yeah, this month we closed seven additional cases, so we're finally getting into those long-term cases and getting some resolution.
Hard ones, tough cases, yeah.
Well, I did a job, Louis.
Thank you.
Very. I'm very enjoy it, but uh.
No, some of those, those ones that, um, the tough ones that seem to hang out on our, on Louis's spreadsheet uh are very tough, very tough, and he does a great job working with the people and trying to come to a positive resolution. I think that's all we got for community development.
Perfect. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you. Recommendation to fill the alternate position on the abatement of dangerous building. What feels for? Yeah, so we had a couple vacancies. Uh we came to you guys maybe the last month or two, so again, quick background, building department's in charge with abatement of dangerous buildings and any fire life safety. Hit, you know, the fire department, we get a fire, we want to assess structural, somebody wants to file a complaint, there's unsafe electrical uh sewage systems backing up or something like that and flowing on the ground and, you know, there's certain times we've got to deem a building unsafe. Sometimes that's associated with removing the occupants. Uh sometimes we've even done complete tear downs of buildings. Um, so we have three primary members and the new code that we're addition that we're under requesting, which is a good thing. Two alternates in the event that three primaries have a conflict of interest. And most of these board members are made up of professionals that live and work in this community, so chances of a conflict are, are there, you know. Primary, we've got Dave Gagmar with Primal Heating and Cooling, Marshall Bex with Bex Construction. And we've got Elvin Spurling with Western Design as our three primaries. Um, the two alternates that we're looking at is Jared Cooper with Cooper Electric, so we can bring in some electrical background. Um, Jared's been, actually been, you know, over the last twenty, thirty years, he's been involved in a couple of these cases, so he's familiar. Plus knows his electrical. Um, and the other one's Trent Evans with uh TE Designs, so he's also familiar with fire life safety requirements of residential dwellings, you know, structural code as far as you know, span ratings for floor joists, roof rafters, that type of thing, so you know some real competent folks that um if we go deem it unsafe, we say, Brian, you gotta get out of your house. Brian's like, no, I'm not leaving. I'm gonna file an appeal.
That's probably what he would say, too. I hate to tell you, Randy.
Then Brian would have the opportunity to say, hey, Randy, you're wrong, and then these, these folks would come in with a third-party opinion of, you know, equivalent experience and say, no, Brian's right, Randy's right. Yeah, so I would recommend that Trent Evans and Jared Cooper be placed to fill the uh alternate positions. Okay, for consent. I'm glad you're still on the way to that. I know.
Yeah.
Me too.
I like the one who put Randy asked me to be honest.
I did, I.
I like that. I thought, well, now I know that uh this guy's, yeah.
Well, the old code says the, the building business is just supposed to appoint somebody.
Sure.
And then with the county's new process of board, you know, so it's kind of a mix between the two and what you don't want is somebody on there that has no construction or experience.
And you work with them.
Yes.
And that's, that's what's really important, too.
Yep.
So anyway, okay.
Good job. Thank you. See that. Thank you. Interim managers report.
That must be you, Will.
Must be, must be me. I just have a couple uh quick items uh today. Um, the uh as the commissioners have seen, we received a recruitment profile for the uh um recruiting of the permanent county manager. Um, that process is moving forward. If um, I'm gonna get back to the recruiter later this week with any final comments on, on that profile. Uh in his email, he indicated that um if we can get that finalized here this week, they will start receiving applications in, in July. So process is moving forward and we, you know, hopefully this summer we'll start to see some applications come in and start to have some conversations about next steps and um scheduling interviews. So that's the uh, that's the quick update on the recruitment of the permanent county manager. Uh, I wanted also just to touch quickly on the compensation study that was adopted um within the last couple of weeks. So the finance department is working hard at going through all of the information and data that has been provided by by Vance and uh we've got a, a list of questions that we need to get answered by, by the consultant. And I will hopefully get that out today so that we can get some clarity on uh some discrepancies we're seeing between what is in the, in the schedule and what, you know, the, the data is showing that was, was come put together by, by the consultant. So long list of questions, we kind of need to get answered to get some clarity, but the finance department's been working really hard and making sure um we're, we're staying on schedule for implementation on, on June first, so um if there are, are further updates necessary for the conversations, um we need to have about the compensation study, I'll, I'll let the board know, but current status is finances, finance is taking the lead, working really hard on that. Uh and that's all I have today for the interim manager report. Do you guys have any questions or anything for me at this point?
I don't. We just talked Tuesday.
You're doing a good job, Will.
But how many days is it there?
Yeah, the newspaper, the newspaper did call me yesterday and uh so hopefully you don't, uh I, I said my sins.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Take a before and after picture with your hair.
By the end of December.
You might be totally gray then, then we will feel bad.
Any commissioner updates?
I have the listening session tomorrow and I have cookies ordered. I have my coffee pot from the ranch. And I was thinking tomorrow morning I might come by the library and see Sarah. What, would you get there at ten or eight? And I knock on the door, you let me in?
Yeah, just come through the staff entrance by the book return on Second Street.
Oh, okay, okay. And I'll come see you and kind of look at everything and, yeah, perfect. Okay, and that's about it with me is the listening thing. We'll see how that goes. Hopefully not, we won't have too many angry people.
Well, I don't have anything that paid on, so.
Okay.
That concludes our.
Our work session.
Please, there are any questions?
Yeah, we'll see you next week.
Board of County Commissioners.
Yeah.
As long as you can talk about to get it on both.
Okay. The Board of County Commissioners will now convene into our executive session. Uh, the executive sessions will be held pursuant to ORS one nine two six six zero two E for real property discussions and ORS one nine two six six zero two H for consultation with legal counsel regarding current litigation or reasonably, or litigation reasonably likely to file. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session while their audience members rush through the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to disclose the contents of the executive session except to state the subject matters previously announced. No decision will be made in the executive session. At the conclusion of the executive session, the Board of Commissioners will be back in the public session and welcome the audience back into the room.